For the record, it is Thursday, June 28, 2018, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Winachi City Council. First would be the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Koulas, would you lead us?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Koulas. For the record, we have four council members here today. Councilmembers Bailey, Esparza, and Markart are at the Association of Washington City's Annual Conference. So we do have a quorum this evening. First item on our agenda are the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings. I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to remove Item F regarding the AARP Community Challenge Grant, and also to adopt the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Koulas, to adopt this evening's agenda with the adjustment of removing Item F and approval of the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda would be citizen comment. We give any member of the audience a chance to come up and speak to the council. I'd give three minutes. Name an address for the record. Mr. Campbell.
First of all, nice job at the naturalization ceremony.
Thank you.
Hundred and nine new citizens. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Campbell, 1837 Jefferson Street. This may be my last opportunity to address the council regarding the districting topic that's on the agenda for the upcoming council meeting on July 12th, where the mayor has asked for an up or down vote on changing Winachi's electoral process from electing council members at large to electing council members by district. The reasons I've heard for changing the current at-large system, which is working well for the city of Winachi, are as follows. Number one, if Winachi doesn't switch to districts, we'll be sued. My response, over ninety percent of the cities in Washington State use the current at-large system, and no evidence has been provided to suggest that Winachi would be sued for not switching to districts. With the passage of the Voting Rights Act, if Winachi is sued, the council can simply switch to districts at that time, and the problem is solved. Number two, when Winachi's, excuse me, Winachi needs more geographic representation on the council. My response, currently, half of the council members live in North Winachi and half live in South Winachi. Districts would actually lead to even more seats being appointed by the council. Number three, Winachi needs more Latino representation on the council. My response, switching to districts would mean that our only Latino council member, Ruth Esparza, would have to run for her seat against Keith Huffaker and Linda Harold. Assuming all candidates have an equal chance, there's a sixty-seven percent chance that our only Latino council member would be removed from the council. Then you actually might be at risk of being sued. Number four, it's a logical next step, and I'm willing to give it a try. My response, those statements are based on hopes and ideology. The analyses and facts simply don't support those statements. Have you analyzed the costs in making this leap of faith in both monetary terms and dividing up our small community? How much time and money has been spent over the last three years? The citizens have been working hard and making good progress at uniting our community. Why do you think dividing our community will be a good idea? That would most likely create territorial disputes and controversy that would be detrimental to the city as a whole. Have you talked with the people that would live on the miles of district borders and asked them how they would feel about the people across the street or in any of the other districts not being able to vote for the candidate in your district? Please don't rely on others' recommendations and do your own analysis before voting. The citizens of Winachi aren't asking for a change, but they will most certainly be asking for your reasons if you make a change. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Brian. Yes, sir. I heard you want to come talk to us.
Sure.
Come on up.
I, you know, it's funny how the day goes. I was just sitting in my garden this afternoon with my wife.
Name, name and address.
My name is Tanner Dotzauer. I live at 1218 Castle Rock. Thank you so much for hearing me. I'm glad to be here.
All right, go ahead.
I have just a letter to read into public record.
Perfect.
Let's see. Dear Councilmembers, today, I was sitting in my backyard with my wife when a large drone flew over our trees of our side yard and hovered fifteen feet away from me. I noticed that the drone was equipped with a sizable camera. After making gestures that it should have, should leave immediately, it seemed to move closer until I began to walk towards it. The drone then flew off crashing in front of my house. As there was no one close by, when I picked up the drone, I loaded it in my truck, and I drove it to the police station. I have no problem with drones themselves, but I have a deep concern about my family's privacy on our own property when a drone has a camera mounted on it. According to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, the estimated number of drones purchased in the United States for recreational use will grow from 1.9 million in 2016 to as many as 4.3 million in 2020. I would like to note that the city of Winachi has a clear policy when it comes to recreation and commercial drone use and private property. Below, I have listed the commonly restricted behaviors according to the Center for the Study of Drones at Bard College. These are for you if you want them. Restriction on the operation over public property, operations over private property without the owner's consent, operation in parks, operations at large events, invasion of privacy and surveillance, impaired operations. This study was by Arthur Hollen Michael, Local State Drone Laws, March 2017. Thank you for your consideration. I have packets if they're, you're interested.
Yeah, bring them up.
They also include a sample of policy from, yes, you're welcome. The town is called Willwood, Missouri.
Thank you.
It's a thirty-five thousand population town, roughly our same size, rural community. Yes, just as consideration of, as this issue grows and what are we going to do about it? Because when I talked to the police, they really didn't have an idea, and when I talked to the clerks, they didn't know.
So ask our city attorney, do you know if we have a law or any sort of regulations regarding drone use?
I don't think we have anything that would regulate it, not that I'm aware of. And I don't know how they regulate it. I don't know if they're federally or...
Well, how it is, is currently the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, kind of is overarching administrative body for all these flying, they're basically considered like remote control planes in a lot of ways. The issue is that they also now are mounted with significant cameras. Even my nephew's little tiny one can have a camera on it, and that does bother me. And many municipalities all over the United States are starting to look into this because the issue is growing. Also, in Washington State, there's, there are, let's see, there are legal standings starting to come down the pike. Here in Washington State, it's HB 1031 that'll explicitly deal with, with private property and drone use.
So I'll have the city attorney sort of see if there's any other cities in our state that have adopted regulations that are maybe stronger than FAA or state law, and then we'll have a little discussion internally, and we'll make sure you're aware of what it is that we come up with.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Tanner.
Did you leave the drone at the police station?
Yeah. Yeah, it's down there. Then eventually the people...
It wasn't like a thousand-dollar drone?
It was a big one, you know? It was like the two-by-two with the big camera on the bottom, and eventually the people in this truck...
Think someone's going to miss their drone?
They eventually drove by, and I said that they can find it at the police station. They were none too happy, but nonetheless, that's how I thought.
All right. Thanks, Tanner.
I love it. Thanks.
Anybody else wish to address the council on any items? Seeing none, we have one presentation this evening regarding Parks and Recreation Month. Councilmember Huffaker.
Proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation activities and experiences provide opportunities for people to grow, to live, grow, and develop into contributing members of the community, and whereas parks and recreation enriches life experiences for members of our community, and whereas the parks and recreation agencies in the community provide outlets for physical activities, socialization, and stress-reducing experiences, and whereas parks, playgrounds, trails, open spaces, and recreation, and aquatic centers make our city an attractive and desirable place to live and work, play, and visit with, which contributes to our economic vitality, and whereas parks, greenways, and open spaces provide a welcome respite from our fast-paced, high-tech-style lifestyle while protecting and preserving our natural environment, and whereas parks and recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, groups, and the entire community, which positively impacts the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of our city. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the City of Winachi, do hereby proclaim July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Winachi, and encourage all citizens to join me in participating in and supporting the many recreational programs and facilities provided by public and private agencies. In witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Winachi to be affixed on the 28th day of June 2018. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker. Sarah Erdal, come on up. Dave, Owen, Dan Long, Long, come on.
We have our vice president here as well.
Mr. Pence, you mean? Is that you, the vice president? Mr. Pence?
Not that one.
You retired, isn't that?
I left about you.
No. Thank you. You want to address the council? Say a few words?
Be delighted to. Well, I hope you're enjoying the wonderful weather that makes enjoying our public parks really pleasant. As you well know, we have a wonderful array of parks in the city with a whole array of activities for adults, children, swimmers, music and art lovers, kids and dogs. Just a few of the activities that you can enjoy this summer include summer date camp and Skyhawks basketball camp, which began this week, the Parks Wading Pool Program and Skyhawks Multi-Sports Camp, our summer concert series, which kicks off next month with Junk Billy down in Centennial Park. So when the kids say there's nothing to do, please invite the public to come down and pick up a copy of our 2018 Summer Activity Guide and enjoy your Winachi City Parks. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Thank you for your volunteering with our Parks Board.
Happy to apply.
All right, action items. We have five or six, so we'll start with the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission reappointment of Sophia Dillon. David?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. David Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director. This evening, we are requesting approval of Resolution 2018-19, which would reappoint Sophia Dillon to Position Nine of the Arts, Rec, and Park Commission, which is our student position. Sophia has been on for the last year or so and really provides really good insight and is a valuable member of the commission. Staff and both the Arts, Rec, and Park Commission recommend her reappointment, and if reappointed, she would serve through June of next year.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2018-19, appointing a member to the Winachi Arts, Recreation, and Parks Commission, being Sophia Dillon.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Koulas, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2018-19, appointing Sophia Dillon to the Arts, Recreation, and Parks Commission. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Next item is regarding Kiwanis-Methow Park Grant Agreement Number Two.
Yeah, grant amendment. So this one actually, back in 2016, we applied for a couple of grants, the $500,000 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for the project, as well as a Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program Account grant. And last February, this February, I should say, we got our Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Agreement, which you guys accepted, and we are now finally in receipt of the grant agreement for the WWRP grant, the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program grant. So since we already have the land and water grant in hand, we're able to just amend that grant to incorporate the WWRP grant into it, since it's the same project. So that's why you see this as a grant amendment, not the fifty-four-page grant agreement. It's all the same terms and conditions and all that good stuff.
All right. Any questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign Grant Amendment Number Two with the State of Washington for the Kiwanis-Methow Park Project.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature and grant Amendment Number Two with the State of Washington for the Kiwanis-Methow Park Project. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We haven't, we haven't working with the Trust for Public Lands on getting the final little piece of the funding together for that park. We're probably about $400,000 away from getting all the way to the finish line, and I have been meeting with some local business owners and others to try to get that funding sort of to the finish line. So hopefully in the next sixty days or so, we'll be able to say that it's fully funded and they can start cranking away at the final project stuff, so it's just to get that done.
Your next meeting, we'll bring forward two similar grant agreements, and this is finally from 2016 for Hail Phase Two. That's $914,000. So finally have that grant agreement in hand after two years of waiting.
So Dave's got a lot of work between all of those parks. All right, Item C, consent to terminate the Ninth Street parking agreement. David?
Okay, so this one, you guys have seen, I think, on a few occasions before, at least been told about it. So essentially, this, we're asking to have the mayor's, the mayor to be authorized to sign the agreement with the PUD, and this essentially cancels our parking use agreement that we have for that Ninth Street lot. It gets us out of the middle between us and the Rowan Paddle Club, so we're not leasing it and then subleasing the lot to Rowan Paddle. Rowan Paddle now has an agreement to work directly with PUD, so just takes us out of the middle of the two groups.
And we still have plan to pave this with part of our LRF funding sometime next year?
Yeah, and I know the engineering department had scheduled a kickoff meeting, and that got sidetracked a little bit with the PUD, and so I know they're planning on, on working through that process.
The more I'm down there, the more I see there's a lot of land in that area for additional parking. I don't know how many stalls I think they can get, but it's got to be a bunch.
Yeah, we had three different alternatives laid out, and just kind of depends on landscaping and things like that.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the consent to terminate permits between the City of Winachi Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County and the City of Winachi and the Winachi Rowan Paddle Club for the Ninth Street parking area.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the mayor's signature on the consent to terminate permits between the City of Winachi and the PUD of Shalane County and the City of Winachi and the Winachi Rowan Paddle Club for the Ninth Street parking area. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So we have two construction projects. I believe staff is going to recommend with respect to Item D that we do not accept any of the bids.
That is correct.
And I think Item E, staff is going to recommend that we do accept a bid. So I'll turn it over to Jacob, and it sounds like Keith maybe has some language for us.
Okay. Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. So the first project is the SR 285 pedestrian crossing improvements project. Been talking to you guys about it a couple of different times, but I'll give a quick project background. So this project was intended to install pedestrian crossing improvements on Spokane Street at the intersection of Shalane Avenue, Mission Street, and then also build a new sidewalk on Spokane between Mission and Winachi Avenue. We solicited bids for this project on April 17th, and unfortunately received no bids on that call. We resolicited bids on June 5th and opened this Tuesday, June 26th. We received two bids. The low was for $626,692.25, which unfortunately was fifty-five percent over our engineer's estimate of roughly $404,000. Based on this overage, staff recommends that we reject all bids with a plan for resolicitation in late 2018 or early 2019. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Do we think it's just a construction environment we're in right now? I've heard bids coming in just way overboard, and everybody's just not expecting what's happening right now.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my opinion. You know, we've been seeing bids in the ten to twenty-five percent over, and, and it's not just us, it's around the region. I'm speaking with Rob before, and people on the West Side are seeing it as well. So it's, it's a product of the economy. But fifty-five percent is, is beyond reason, in my opinion.
Agreed. Your Honor, I'm going to read the revised motion for the City Project 1601. Staff recommends the City Council reject all bids for the SR 285 South Winachi Pedestrian Crossing Improvement Project, and authorize the Public Works Director to call for a rebid in the same manner as the original call.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to recommend that the City Council reject all bids for the State Route 285 South Winachi Pedestrian Crossing Improvement Project, and authorize the Public Works Director to call for a rebid. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accept the next bid, maybe.
I'm going to stick to the script on the next one. So this one is for City Project 1715. It is our middle school crossing improvements project. Again, I'll give a quick background here, I think, though I think most of you are aware of it. The city received a Safe Road to School grant in the amount of $341,000 with the plan to do pedestrian crossing improvements in front of Foothills Middle School across Maple Street, and then in addition to that, do some improvements at the intersection of Miller and Orchard. Those improvements consist of new pedestrian ramps, pedestrian-actuated rapid rectangular flashing beacons, and then radar speed, excuse me, radar speed feedback signs as well. Got a tongue twister there. Bids were opened this last Tuesday, June 26th, and we received one bid from Hurst Construction in the amount of $389,051.20. That particular bid is eleven percent over the engineer's estimate. In the council packet, there was a total, or there was an engineer's estimate of $380,000. That was actually 350. There was some construction administration money rolled into that number inadvertently. Should the project go forward? We'd expect it to begin on or around July 23rd. It's a six-week contract, so it should be done by the end of August or early September. Staff recommends moving forward and awarding this contract. I don't foresee a situation where we'd get a more competitive bid by, by delaying at this point, so.
And the lowest responsible bidder was Hurst Construction?
Correct.
Can you tell me a little bit about these radar signs? Are they the ones that are on full-time, only during school activity?
Only during school activities. So they'll be similar to the ones that we've got, for instance, on Springwater, when you're coming by Lewis and Clark. So they're consistent with what we have.
Red feedback when they're over speed?
Yeah, yeah. So not, not like the ones you see on Lambert Street that are, are on all the time, it's just during, during school hours.
Did you say eleven, eleven percent over?
Correct.
Oh, okay, good. So that's a good one. Even though it's eleven percent over, because I know we're looking at twenty to twenty-five percent.
The whole project budget, yeah.
And you mentioned some of the stuff was projected in 2016 is the reason our engineers looked at 2016, correct?
The Grand Testament was put together in 2016, so that's...
These are, yeah, if we can get twenty, twenty-five percent, it's eleven percent's a winner to me, so.
Well, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council to approve the project budget and award the construction contract for the middle school crossing improvements project to the lowest responsible bidder with the recommendation of public works staff, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to award the construction contract for the middle school crossing improvement project to the lowest responsible bidder, that being Hurst Construction, and with the recommendation of the public works staff, and authorize the mayor to sign all construction contract documents. Discussion?
Just so I'm consistent, we have heard from Winachi School District and from our own law enforcement that one of the biggest problem areas for school zone speeding is Crawford at Methow, leading to Lincoln Elementary. I would like the next speed radar speed feedback sign, I would really encourage the city to follow through at that intersection. It's been a long time, and there are a lot of, still a lot of students that live south of Crawford. I don't know if they're all being bused, but it also serves the Lincoln Park area as well. And our law enforcement has continuously told us that that is one of the worst school zone speed violation areas.
Is that a project that's on our radar screen?
It's, it's both on our radar screen in terms of our transportation improvement plan. We also turned in grant applications in May for the next round of Safe Roads to School, and that intersection is one that we included, so.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
I'm not sure on the timeline when we hear back, but, but it is one that...
So if it's one that we hear back positively, is it one that we could do next year? Is it designed far enough to make that happen, or is it...
The funding wouldn't be allocated in time for that to take place. It's, it's very preliminary in terms of the design, so it would likely be a 2020 construction.
All right. Any other questions for Jacob? If not, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. All right, we have one public hearing item tonight, that being regarding an annexation of some land currently held by the Shalane Douglas Land Trust. So we will hear from staff and ask any questions of staff, and then we'll turn it over to any members of the public who would wish to address the council, and then we'll turn over to the council for any action they may have. So who's, oh, hi, Brooklyn.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Brooklyn Holton Housing and Community Planner for the City of Winachi. And on June 14th, we set this public hearing for today for the Shalane Douglas annexation, and this is about 61.55 acres at the end of Maiden Lane, and there's no property or utilities or anything out there, it's just vacant land that Shalane Douglas owns, so we wanted to do the public hearing. And we have the ordinance 2018-18 in front of you, and that would be setting the process and starting the sixty-day kind of waiting sort of comment period, and then we, the next step would be working with OFM in Shalane County to finalize that process, and then that land would be annexed into the city.
Okay. Any questions for Brooklyn? Any members of the audience wish to address the City Council regarding this public hearing item, regarding the annexation of property currently owned by the Shalane Douglas Land Trust near Maiden Lane? Seeing no takers, I will turn it over to the council for any action they may have.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-18, providing for the annexation of an unincorporated area located directly west of Phase Eight and Phase Nine of the Broadview Neighborhood at the end of Maiden Lane, also known as the Shalane Douglas Land Trust Annexation, subject to the provisions of ordinance number 2007-34 and all subsequent amendments thereto.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Koulas, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to approve ordinance 2018-18, providing for the annexation of unincorporated area located near Phase Eight and Nine of Broadview Neighborhood in the Maiden Lane area, subject to the provisions of ordinance 2007-34. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brooklyn. Mayor's report, I don't really have anything to report. The bond proceeds showed up today, so we actually had a closing and actually got our sewer bond money today. Construction's underway, if you're out in that area. They're still trying to drill underneath, they're having some issues with getting the pipe sort of under the freeway, but they're working on that, so it seems to be going okay. All the other construction projects, I think, are moving along pretty well. I know the one in front of the hospital is. We are, I think, learning more about districting. Did you get a chance, Steve, to look at any of the RCWs today? Did you get my voicemail?
I did. I'm familiar with that.
So, yeah, I just, so I was kind of thinking we'd get a chance to vote on the 12th of July, but it sounds to me like we don't. So do you want to just kind of give the council just a quick, brief sort of what the RCW say we need to do?
Yeah, well, so the new, as far as the process goes, the new Senate bill requires public notice and one public hearing before you adopt the plan or the redistricting plan. So you've got to have at least one public hearing, at least one week before you're adopting the plan. So if you intend to bring this up on the 12th and have your public hearing on that date, then you couldn't adopt it that date, have to adopt it at the next...
So we can continue the hearing for, say, decision only to another, a later date?
Yeah, has to be at least a week later.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what I've understood, is that you were planning to then take it up at the 19th, I guess, as a special meeting, which would be fine, as long as we advertise for that.
Or at our regular meeting.
Yeah, there's some, there's some issues with, I think, and you can explain, and Steve will do some more research, about when the new state law takes effect, and I think the 19th is a pretty important day for some of that stuff.
As far as the effective date? I didn't look at that, but I think, I thought it took effect, well, I can't remember, but it's effective now.
Yeah, I, there was some, something in the...
The date, one of the dates we have to worry about is the, you have to count backwards from the general election. I think that, that might be one of the concerns. You have like a three-month...
Well, we don't have a city election this fall.
So that really wouldn't be an issue, then?
Yeah. So I think, I think that there's just a lot sort of in terms of researching the RCWs. We certainly, I was, thought we could just vote on the 12th. Clearly, we can't vote on the 12th. So I think the communication to the public, to the media, is that we really can't vote on the 12th, we can take public testimony on the 12th.
Right.
If we decide to vote on the 19th or at a later date, is that a public hearing that also takes public testimony, or are we done taking public testimony?
It's up to you. You could have another hearing if you want. You have to have at least one public hearing.
Okay. And the public hearing and the vote can't be at the same time, on the same day, is what you're telling me?
Well, again, you could, right, you can continue the public hearing.
I think so, yeah. So basically, you can't do it for one week after the public hearing, so...
But, so you continue a public hearing, then you've got another public hearing, then you got to wait another week?
No, I don't think so. That's the minimum, just you have to have that one minimum public hearing, so if you want to make...
So again, I'm just sort of, over the next week and a half or so, I'm interested in you giving us some direction in terms of whether we have to extend the public hearing, as Councilmember Kula says, or can we close the public hearing and then vote at a different time?
All right. Eight time and place for voting.
Yeah, and then make it...
Because, you know, I'm looking at this, that there's, there's a lot of, a lot of options, and clearly it's going to take, you know, testimony and then discussion among the council, where we can't make a decision, but at least to provide some direction as to what types of final ordinances, what form we'd like final ordinances to, to look like, and give Mr. Smith's office time to craft any of those, any or all of those versions for presentation during, for the decision timeframe.
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, we do have a couple of proposed versions of the ordinance prepared, but yeah, after you look at that and after you take testimony and you think about it and discuss it, that might change to some degree.
Steve, isn't the 19th, something about the state law that's going into effect? I don't know what you're talking about. I think that's where the 19th comes first word, that she was hoping that the action would be taken on the 19th for the state law.
I didn't look at that, I don't know what she...
But she's back in town, you guys can kind of talk it out and figure out, we don't need to get into details now, but I, my, my biggest concern wasn't, you know, it was just communicating, because I've said for a long time, we're going to have the public hearing and we're going to vote. I didn't realize state law prohibited us from having a public hearing and voting on the same day. So I'm just trying to get that communication out, because I think there's a lot of people that expect that decision to be made on that day.
Sure.
So for me, it's about communicating to the community that we are taking public hearing, but state law doesn't allow us to vote on the same day that we take public testimony.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. But that's my bad for saying, I, you know, I just, so...
Yeah, well, you know, and we hadn't narrowed in on exactly how we were going to do it until just recently, so...
And so, and any advertising for a public hearing, can we make sure we include in there that we'll gladly accept written comments and actually encourage them?
Yeah, that would be great.
We could.
Yeah. Okay, that's actually all I had on, on the districting thing. Thanks, Steve.
Okay.
Councilmembers, anything on the, your sort of council stuff that you're working on?
Monday, we had a homeless steering committee meeting, and most of us were present. We received an increase in consolidated homeless grant dollars of $88,703, and the committee voted to give $23,934 to the Community Action Prevention Program Rental Assistance, $5,000 to MIND Prevention Program, $12,500 to the Community Action Council Coordinated Entry, Sage Coordinated Entry, $2,000, Shalane Regional Justice Center Transitional Housing, $10,000. And then there is a pilot program for hotel motel voucher program under the Community Action Council's Rapid Rehousing Grant, $18,964. And by statute, by the state, the City of Wenatchee receives a 15% for administration, which is $13,305. Regarding this hotel motel voucher program, it's, they've loosened up on some of the restrictions so that we can use hotels for temporary housing and vouchers, and what it's going to, it will involve in working with the local hotels to see what kind of rates we can get and see if we can get the best purchase. And then also, Emily Harris Shears with Building Changes attended the meeting, and she provided an update on the progress of their study on low-barrier housing. She went into quite a bit of detail about what, what we should do and shouldn't do, and she really encouraged to keep the rules and the restrictions at a minimum, because this is designed to get those people off the street, help get them the mental health counseling that they need, and to get them back into society as productive citizens. And it's, it's an excellent program. I was really, I'm really pleased with the direction it's going, and I believe it said we are required by, beginning in July 2018, each region in the state will be required to establish at least one low-barrier housing program for homeless individuals. And what is happening is that Wenatchee is seeing a huge increase in homeless, because there's a lot of information going around on the West Side that go to Wenatchee, they've got services there where they can't get help over on the West Side, so this is going to become a very serious problem, and we need to address it.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's nice to see the extra funding, and I appreciate you guys going through the effort to figure out where it needs to go, and...
It's going to be very helpful, so...
Anybody else?
From Shalane Douglas Health, I'm sure you're all aware of the bat issue we've had recently. There's actually been three rabid bats found in the state of Washington, two of them were in Shalane County. And people just need to be aware not to handle a bat if you find one. We had a couple of kids downtown that found a bat the other day, and by the time they got it in a box, they'd both handled it several times. Fortunately, the bat was found to be not rabid in this case, but we just need to get the word out. If you find a bat, don't touch it, call the main society.
Some of us, a couple of weeks ago...
Who would touch a bat?
Was it that we toured the community room or the event center at Pibus and the remodel there? I dropped in on Saturday there, there was an event, the Wenatchee Pride was being held there, so I stopped in. The wainscoting has been put in the, in the room, the out, the exterior finish is mostly done, and the, and the space was functioning just as we saw it down there, where those large glass doors were opened up out onto the patio, so they had people freely going in and out. There was actually a band playing, if you were inside, you could still carry on a conversation, so it was a really nice space.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a good event, too.
Yeah. And again, the, the folks at, at Pibus are really excited that, you know, some of the money that we gave them to purchase the property is going back into the property, so they were really excited to show that off to the, to the council, so thanks for doing that and have money.
Did they say if they were doing anything with the flooring in there, in the event room, or is it staying just as it is?
I think it's staying as is, but they will be putting sound attenuation in the, in the room.
Okay. They'll continue to work on some of the sound and echoing and noise stuff in that, in that room, I know they're...
It's an excellent facility.
And I have some splash upstairs in the, yeah, so...
And we have a lot of groups at the convention center that are just, they're using it for off-site events, and it's become a really popular draw.
They have several hundred people in there comfortably.
Yeah. I mean, it's every Saturday morning down there, there's something, whether it's the Pride Event or the Fun Run or something, that's just sort of the place that everybody[1790.12]